Hello, everyone. Welcome to today's New York City Council Hybrid Hearing of the Committee on Health. Place all electronic devices to vibrate our side label. If you wish to submit testimony, you may send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair, we are ready to begin. Thank you for your cooperation, everyone.
Good morning. I am Councilmember Lynn Schulman, Chair of the Committee on Health. I want to thank all of you for joining us for today's Oversight Hearing. The purpose of today's hearing is to discuss and evaluate the city's efforts to improve and expand access to in-community health care and to allow New Yorkers to make informed decisions about their health. There is longstanding, deep inequity in access to health care in New York City. At the borough level, Manhattan has 1,200 general practitioners per 100,000 residents, while Queens has only 365 practitioners per 100,000 residents, and the Bronx has only 225. There is an insufficient number of primary care providers citywide, with 52% of all primary care located in Manhattan and Brooklyn. When people have to travel further for care, they are less likely to access that care because of having to miss work, obtain childcare, or because a disability or chronic condition makes travel difficult. The lack of in-community care options, gaps in access to public transportation, and the lack of culturally and linguistically competent care at the community level excludes many New Yorkers from the healthcare system and denies them the ability to take control of their health. More than 40% of adults in our state have chronic health conditions. Rates of heart disease and hypertension in New York are well above the national average. With the current crisis of healthcare staffing and an aging population that is experiencing worsening health outcomes, we must do everything we can to educate our communities about managing their health, and we must take steps to reduce the burden on our strained healthcare system. As Chair of this committee, I have continually emphasized the need for equity in healthcare, and that starts with equity in access to education, primary care, life-saving medicines, and medical devices to help individuals monitor their health and manage chronic conditions. Today, we are hearing a suite of bills designed to bring care closer to home. These bills seek to expand access to care, allow New Yorkers to make informed decisions about their health, and learn skills to help neighbors in need of emergency assistance. My bill, Intro 975, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to post information about free CPR courses available to the public in New York City and to update this information regularly to ensure that New Yorkers know when and where these courses are offered. According to the American Heart Association, CPR has been shown to increase the chance of survival in individuals who experience sudden cardiac arrest. The first few minutes after a person goes into cardiac arrest are the most critical. Bystanders who witness or encounter a person in cardiac arrest are the ones who can maintain blood flow to the vital organs by performing chest compressions before trained medical professionals arrive, improving a person's chances of survival. With my legislation, we will better connect people with free CPR courses in their communities and empower them to take action and save lives. I have dedicated my personal and professional life to healthcare advocacy. As someone who has had firsthand experience working in the healthcare field, I believe that education and easy access are critical tools in ensuring that New Yorkers have the information and resources they need to live healthy and happy lives. We continue to be in desperate need of additional hospital capacity, and we must strive for more community-based primary care that is culturally and linguistically tailored to each community. Healthcare is a human right, and your status, financial circumstances, and zip code should not determine the quality of care you receive and how quickly you receive it. I want to conclude by thanking the committee staff for their work on this hearing, Committee Council Sarah Sutra and Chris Pepe, and Policy Analyst Manor Butt, as well as my team, Chief of Staff Jonathan Boucher, and Legislative Director Kevin MacLeir. I will now turn it over to Councilmember Narcisse for a statement on her legislation being considered today. Thank you.
As a nurse, my name is Mercedes Narcisse, and I represent the 46th District, which governs Canarsie area, Flatlands area, and those areas are known to have, I mean, to get the blunt of anything, and the pandemic hit us hard. It has been difficult. So I'm here to address the inequities, not only in the 46th District, but throughout of New York City. As Chair of Hospitals Committee in New York City Council here, I'm looking forward to listen to see how the best way we can address the inequities. My community, I have seen it, worked my community for many decades, tried to do the best I can on my own platform, but it's not enough. I believe New York City, like Chair Schulman said, is a right. Folks should have access to quality healthcare, no matter what zip code you live in. So as a nurse for three decades, I have worked in a hospital where the inequities was just in your face, you're not turned your back. Elmhurst Hospital, and I have a chance to do home care for visiting nurse services, for girling home care, and I had to work in rehabilitation as well. So what I'm here is to listen to you and talk and have a conversation and have a plan and a strategy. All the bill that we're introducing today, it's built to address, I mean, legislation to address the problem that we have in New York City. It should not be based on your zip code, like we said. All the bill from 0.250096, those are things that we should have done before. We should not be taking so long. We have to lead by example. New York City is a place that we say welcome for everyone, and we have to lead as such. Providing healthcare is a right, and I'm looking forward to listen to you and to see how the best way we can address the inequities in our city. So thank you, Chair Schulman.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. I also want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmembers Crystal Hudson and Julie Menon. Now, I'm going to ask the council to administer the oath.
Good morning, everyone. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Okay, you may proceed with your testimony. Thank you.
Good morning, and amen to those words, Councilmembers Mercedes Narcisse and Council Chairperson Lynn Schulman. It's really an honor to be here today. My name is Dr. Duncan Maru. I am an internal medicine and pediatric doctor. I also practice and teach at H&amp;H Elmhurst Hospital, and I serve as the Assistant Commissioner for the Bureau of Equitable Health Systems here at the New York City Health Department. I'm joined by my two wonderful and creative colleagues, Emily Ashton, who is the Assistant Commissioner for Family and Child Health Administration and Strategy, along with our Deputy Commissioner for Environmental Health, Corinne Schiff. And this topic is very clearly quite personal for all of you and all of us as we try to memorialize and recover and reimagine our communities and the health of our communities at this moment. The Health Department's mission is to protect and improve the health of all New Yorkers so that everyone can realize their full health potential, regardless of who they are, how old they are, where they are from, or where they live. Our work is broad-ranging. You see us in the inspection grades at restaurants, the low-to-no-cost health clinics at neighborhoods, and the birth certificates for your children. We are also behind the scenes investigating clusters of illnesses, studying the patterns, causes, and effects of health and disease conditions in New York City neighborhoods. We also work to address enduring gaps in health between white New Yorkers and community colors, as you both just mentioned. Structural racism is at the root of these health inequities, which is why we have made racial justice a foundation of all the work that we do. A key pillar in our approach is providing targeted services in the most historically marginalized communities in our city and which also experience the highest rates of illness and premature death. We have established neighborhood health action centers in the Tremont neighborhood of the South Bronx, in East Harlem, and in Brownsville, Brooklyn. These neighborhood health action centers include co-located, community-based organizations and provide a one-stop shop for critical services and supports that serve the needs of their neighborhoods. This includes primary mental health care, referral to networks of neighborhood resources, health and wellness classes, workshops, and activities. In 2021, we also launched the Public Health Corps, which strengthens the city's public health infrastructure by partnering with community groups and community health workers. The initial work of the Public Health Corps is focused on outreach and education to eliminate COVID-19 inequities. However, the work goes beyond COVID-19, providing communities with education and connections to resources on other issues such as chronic diseases. These are just a few ways in which the Health Department is focused on providing neighborhood-based programming that addresses the health of our communities. I'll now turn to the bills under consideration today. Regarding Intro 975, the Health Department supports the intent of Intro 975, which would provide information on free cardiopulmonary resuscitation courses to the public. When the cardiac arrest occurs outside of a hospital setting, the risk of mortality significantly increases. According to the American Heart Association, nine in 10 people who experience out-of-hospital cardiac arrest have unfortunately fatal outcomes. Fortunately, as Councilmember mentioned, administration of cardiopulmonary resuscitation can double or triple a person's chance of survival if performed within the first few minutes of cardiac arrest. Further, individuals from low-income, predominantly Black and Hispanic neighborhoods are less likely to receive CPR from bystanders than people in higher-income and majority-white neighborhoods. Common barriers to bystander-administered CPR are fear of causing additional injury or concerns about inadequate skills. We would like to highlight that FDH, the Fire Department, FDNY, offers free hands-on CPR classes to New Yorkers through their FDNY Free CPR Program and FDNY Teens Take Heart CPR Program, and we certainly encourage New Yorkers to take advantage of this wonderful resource. Regarding the pre-considered intro regarding hypertension, our Health Department very much supports the intent of providing people with hypertension the ability to monitor their blood pressure outside of clinical settings. Hypertension or high blood pressure is a major risk factor for cardiovascular disease and a leading cause of death in New York City. We are happy to share that we convened the city's first comprehensive, population-wide initiative focusing on preventing and controlling high blood pressure called Take the Pressure Off New York City. The initiative is led by a coalition of faith and community-based organizations, employers, healthcare systems, pharmacies, organized labor, health insurance payers, government agencies, and other stakeholders. In regard to monitoring blood pressure, our focus has been on addressing the gaps and identifying the barriers to accessing at-home blood pressure monitors. Cost is an enormous barrier for use of these machines, and there has been work to address this, including distribution of home blood pressure monitors to providers and residents located in marginalized neighborhoods, including those designated by the Task Force on Racial Inclusion and Equity Tree neighborhoods, to promote, and these promote cell blood pressure monitoring. Expanding blood pressure kiosks is another model. However, not everyone is willing or able to check their blood pressure in public, and one might not always get an accurate reading in that setting because the person must rest quietly for five minutes before using the kiosk. Confirming the diagnosis and monitoring blood pressure also requires frequent checks, which can make use of these kiosks a barrier. Because of this, the Health Department is working to better address barriers in obtaining at-home blood pressure monitors as the best available care. We are happy to continue discussions on this bill and the best ways to address blood pressure monitoring for the public. Now, regarding Intro 96, the Department recognizes the importance of ensuring Visions testing for low-income New Yorkers. As part of last budget's negotiation, the Department was asked to pilot a program that would create a mobile vision program to enable free eye exams and glasses for low-income New Yorkers. The demonstration project will be released shortly, and the 1.4 million contract will last for three years. This pilot will be evaluated to determine if the project should be continued or expanded. Health and Hospitals also provides eye care for children, adolescents, and adults through eye care clinics located throughout New York City. H&amp;H Services include conditions like cataracts, glaucoma, retinal disorders, in addition to eyeglass prescription, and these are often filled onsite. We are happy to discuss with Council further the intent of this legislation, given that low-cost eye care is available through H&amp;H and while the pilot is presently underway. Regarding Intro 325, Intro 325 aims to maintain a list of pediatric emergency rooms, including information about their locations and available medical services. The Health Department recognizes the intent of this bill. However, we believe that a primary care doctor remains the best resource for families to receive information regarding pediatric care facilities. A primary care doctor should guide parents and guardians on where to go in the case of a true emergency, such as where the provider has a hospital affiliation to ensure continuity of care. Additionally, it would be difficult to accurately provide the list of services pediatric emergency rooms provide, since services can change with hospital designations, available consults, and a variety of other operational reasons, and we're certainly happy to discuss this further. Finally, regarding Intro 814, to issue a report on the quantities and locations of automated external defibrillators, or AEDs, placed in public places. We would like to discuss with Council the goals of this legislation and options on how to meet these goals. We would like to include our emergency medical services colleagues, EMS, since these devices are used in emergency situations. As written, the bill would require resources to identify and monitor the location of AEDs in public places. There are also training considerations for AEDs to ensure that they are used properly. I will now turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Schiff to discuss regulations around the use of x-ray equipment.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Corinne Schiff, Deputy Commissioner for Environmental Health. The Health Department is charged with permitting and inspecting radiation-emitting equipment such as x-ray machines and CT scans in the healthcare setting. Exposure to radiation is a cancer risk, and the risk accumulates over a lifetime. It is important, then, for all of us individually and in public health to reduce radiation exposure. The New York City Health Code sets out requirements that do just that, with protections for patients, workers, and others who may be in or near the facility. Of course, the x-ray is also useful for a healthcare provider making a diagnosis or using therapeutically, and so our goal is to balance the potentially significant risk of radiation exposure with the importance of this tool. The principle that guides this balance is to achieve an exposure that is as low as reasonably achievable, or ALARA. In other words, at every step, the goal is ALARA, a radiation exposure that is as low as possible to meet the healthcare need. That is true no matter where you receive the x-ray, whether in a hospital, a standalone radiological facility, an urgent care, or a provider's office. The New York City Board of Health updated the Health Code in 2019 to align its requirements with updated industry standards and following robust engagement with stakeholders, including the Greater New York Hospital Association, the New York State Radiological Society, the Greater New York Chapter of the Health Physics Society, and the Radiological and Medical Physics Society of New York. The final rule incorporated the feedback from these stakeholders. The updated Health Code rule includes, as relevant to this hearing, limits on the use of mobile x-ray equipment. Mobile x-ray equipment creates specific risk of radiation exposure because, for example, it may be used in a room not meeting the construction mandates that control exposure, and because it tends to produce a lower-quality image that can result in the provider having to take multiple images when otherwise fewer would be needed. Fewer images means less radiation exposure. As dictated by ALARA, the protective approach is to use mobile equipment only when needed for patient health, that is, to use equipment that can be brought to the patient only when the patient cannot reasonably be brought to the equipment. Accordingly, the Health Code limits use of mobile x-ray units to hospitals for emergency rooms, trauma centers, and in-house patients who are not ambulatory, as well as for house calls and in long-term healthcare facilities. Other locations must use fixed x-ray equipment with all of the protections that accompany it. This Health Code rule mirrors the recommendation of the Conference of Radiation Control Program Directors, the industry standard-setting non-governmental organization, and other jurisdictions, including the U.S. Food and Drug Administration and the Environmental Protection Agency and states around the country. Thank you for your time and consideration today. We are happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much for this comprehensive testimony. Before we get to questions, I'm going to ask Councilmember Krishnan to make a statement about his bill that he's introducing.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much, Chair Schulman, for today's hearing, for giving me the opportunity to speak on my legislation. It's so good to see you all today from Health Department Two. Assistant Commissioner Maru, it's very nice to see you as a constituent and someone who does great work both in our neighborhood and around the city and country for healthcare access. So thank you for your testimony. Very nice to see you. I wanted to say a few words on my legislation, Intro 814, regarding having more data available and sharing more information about the existence of automatic external defibrillators, or AEDs, across New York City. One thing we know for sure in the medical context, and we've seen over and over again when it comes to public health, the two most effective ways to address health crises and medical problems in our healthcare system is, one, of course, prevention, and two, is education. Making sure that patients, individuals, know the availability of healthcare, healthcare resources, and services to them has a tremendous benefit in both, if not for increasing preventative responses, but for responding in the situation as it's occurring. When it comes to cardiac arrest, we know that this is a condition that affects so many Americans across the country, and it's one where every minute, every second of an abnormal heart rhythm or cardiac arrest matters in chances of survival. We don't need to look any further than just this past January when Buffalo Bill Safety Damar Hamlin gave us all an incredible shock and scare around the country when he went into cardiac arrest on the football field. Thankfully, he's making an incredible recovery, and we need to make sure that every single New Yorker knows the resources available to them to assist in those situations. Just yesterday, Majority Leader Chuck Schumer, in the United States Senate, unveiled legislation called the Access to AED Act with Safety Damar Hamlin, addressing on the federal level the way in which to expand access to AEDs for schools. Our bill on the citywide level would require the city of New York, in collaboration with you all, to compile information on the existence of AEDs currently across New York City. Whether that data is shared through a new system created by our Health Department or whether it's done through putting it on the city's open data portal as well, the point of the legislation is to make sure that every New Yorker knows where the lifesaving equipment is. God forbid there should be any situation where anyone needs it and goes into cardiac arrest. Again, a situation where every second in response time matters. And it also can give us an ability to, one, make sure that every New Yorker knows, in language accessible, once we know the existence and location of all the AEDs throughout our city, then we can ensure that every New Yorker is, through an extensive public education campaign, both that is culturally and linguistically accessible, knows where the resources are, knows how to access them in a time of emergency, and we can also identify places that are AED deserts, where we need to have AEDs that don't currently exist, and come up with an action plan to make sure that everyone has access to AEDs. But the one thing that we do know and that we've seen over and over again is expanding access, expanding education efforts can go an incredibly long way in both preventing situations or addressing them in times of crisis. According to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Preventative Division for Heart Disease and Stroke Prevention, placing AEDs at public locations where cardiac arrest is likely to occur have been found to increase out-of-hospital cardiac arrest survival, improve neurological outcomes for patients, and increase rates of return of spontaneous circulation or the resumption of sustained heart rhythms. We know these solutions work, and this legislation will help us tremendously in making sure that everyone has both the knowledge of where AEDs are currently located, and we can improve and expand upon access for every New Yorker. So no New Yorker has to suffer a cardiac arrest or abnormal heart rhythm without knowing whether there is resources on the other side available to them. I would like to thank in particular Jacksonite's resident constituent Sumana Hari Harishwara, who's brought this issue to our attention from her own personal experience, knowing that it could have also saved her father's life as well, is something that both is personally very impactful to me and is a reason why we wanted to push forward this legislation as well. So thank you all. Thank you, Chair Schulman, and looking forward to continued conversation to make sure we get the legislation enacted and implemented.
Thank you. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmembers Barron and Ariola, and earlier this morning, Councilmember Velasquez. I did that early. So I just want to ask some general questions about urgent care centers and in-community care. The New York City Health Department clinics offer patients sexual health, immunization, and tuberculosis services regardless of immigration status by operating a number of sexual health clinics, immunization clinics, and TB chest centers across New York City. Can you elaborate on what services each clinic provides and what are their limitations in terms of services?
Thank you for that question, Chair Schulman. Our sexual health clinics provide STI services, HIV services, contraception services, medication, abortion, MPoC services, and urgent care follow-up for some patients. Our immunization clinics offer all-schedule vaccines for children ages four to 18 and vaccines for adults. We are happy to get you a full list of vaccines offered separately. The TB chest centers offer TB testing, chest x-rays, medical evaluations for TB treatment, social service referrals, and HIV counseling and testing and other services, and for a complete list of services, we do provide those online.
So what are the limitations in terms of services? By the way, I also would like for you to mention the new rapid testing that you're going to have for STIs, if you want to elaborate on that.
Yes. So in terms of our limitations, you know, we are proud to offer an array of services that we provide at our clinics. We do have, there is a very particular role of public health clinics that meet certain needs with respect to, that complement and meet gaps that are not filled by the healthcare delivery system, including the extensive public services that we're very fortunate to have through H&amp;H. And with respect to your other question regarding rapid testing for STIs, I actually don't, I think we'll have to, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, that's fair. How many sexual health clinics are located throughout New York City?
There's five of the sexual health, the eight sexual health clinics are currently operational. These are Chelsea, Fort Greene, Morrisonia, Jamaica, and Corona. The closed clinics are Crown Heights, Central Harlem, and Riverside.
Are there any plans to open more sexual health clinics?
Not at this time.
Okay. How many immunization clinics are there?
Currently, we have the Fort Greene Health Center, which offers immunization at no cost regardless of immigration status for all people ages four years and older.
And the number of TB chest centers?
There are four chest centers at Morrisonia, Fort Greene, Washington Heights, and Corona.
Now, going back to the sexual health clinics, there's been, or it's been reported to us there's a little bit, or it seems, there seems to be a little bit of a rise in HIV and AIDS, STIs, especially post-COVID, because you have a limited amount of sexual health clinics. Do you cross over and do work with H&amp;H around that, or how do we, how do we expand services for people that need to be tested and get treatment?
That's a wonderful question. You know, we certainly have many forms in which we try to align our services with H&amp;H, again, recognizing our role as a public health department vis-à-vis New York City. again, recognizing our role as a public health department vis-à-vis New York City Health and Hospitals as a healthcare delivery system. And, you know, certainly happy to have follow-up conversations about how to better align those and identify the gaps you're talking about.
Besides DOH/MH-run clinics, what are the benefits associated with having community health centers in multiple locations across New York City?
Another wonderful question. The, you know, I think it's vital, especially at this moment, in our city and nation's history to have a physical presence of public health in neighborhoods. And so, it's vital both for providing services and for our staff to have eyes and ears on the ground, listening to community members and being able to amplify their voices and help us do our job better.
How do community health centers differ from urgent care centers such as CityMD in terms of types of services offered? And I just want to express that what's upsetting to me is that in my community, we have a number of urgent care centers like CityMD, which when I go around and I talk to people in the community, they tell me that that's what they use as their primary care, as opposed to having a community health center. So, that's why I'm asking that question.
Absolutely. And thank you for elevating this issue. The urgent care center ecosystem, if you will, is rapidly expanding in New York City, and I certainly think it's a very important healthcare delivery question. They, you know, the idea of urgent care is that they provide some immediate services outside of an emergency department to, that enables more timely care and helps to decrease the burden on our emergency departments. And especially given the, as you already, you have mentioned, the real inequities and lack of primary care centers in New York City, urgent cares do fill a certain gap for providing a number of urgent services outside of, that our primary care system is not, is not, is currently providing. And I think just your point about cost and affordability, it's certainly, again, I mean, this is largely a, New York State regulates this, but it is, it's an enormous equity issue, both for safety net primary care providers who are trying to care for and provide medical homes and are, in a sense, getting, are competing with these urgent care centers, and also for the fact that many urgent care centers do not accept certain forms of insurance.
So, how can access, again, sort of wrapping this line of questioning, how can access to in-community healthcare in any form be improved throughout New York City, especially in high-need areas such as health deserts? Hard questions.
Yeah. I'd love to, you know, we'd love to talk with this much more extensively offline with you all. I mean, I think just, the one line here is, how do we all work together to make a more robust primary care system where every New Yorker has a medical home where, that you know your providers, your providers know you, and you have, you can access those services in a convenient way, in a person-centered way, and at minimal cost to you as a user of those services? And, as you well know, we have a very far way to go.
So, I have, in my district, and I have one of the highest number of older adults in the city, and older adult population is increasing. So, how do you reach out to them? What kind of services? Do you work with DIFTA around this issue? Because a lot of them don't have access, and these are the people that I'm talking to in my community that are going to CityMD and places like that. So, they need to have, especially with chronic disease, especially there are issues in terms of when one's getting older and everything else, so...
Yeah. No, another really important question. We are, we certainly have, we have a number, a group, a health aging unit at our Health Department, and we are collaborating with DIFTA on a number of initiatives, and we're taking part in the cabinet for, New York City's Cabinet for Older Adults. And certainly, our mayor and deputy mayor are prioritizing, how do we, different agencies work together on these very intersectional issues related to health and well-being and social safety? And we're very keen to continue to, continue that dialogue with you all and with our partners at DIFTA.
Yeah. One of the things I would like to do during my time in the council and as health chair is to try and pull all this together so that our seniors and everybody else, and including what Chair Narcisse had said about zip code, that we have to make sure that healthcare is accessible and affordable. So, I'll be, I'm hoping to work with you guys moving forward on that. I will now turn it over to Councilmember Barron to ask some questions.
Thank you very much. Do you all go to commissioner's school on how to answer our questions? Because you always say, "Thank you for that question. What a wonderful question." All the commissioners say that. Do you really think all of our questions are wonderful? Or is it commissioner's school that you go to when you address the council? Make sure you thank them for that question.
Thank you for that question.
Whenever I hear a commissioner say, "I agree with the intent of a bill," that's a red flag for me. These bills, to me, are no-brainers. Even if you're doing equitable services, we're not doing enough. So, whether it's about defibrillators, or whether it's about vision care, I don't understand the just out-and-out support of the bill, not just the intent, because that really means nothing. Doesn't tell whether you are supporting the bill. You all usually say, "I support the intent of the bill, but we need to have more discussions." And for this, these bills are so, so no-brainers to me that at least say, "You support the bill, and we'll talk about ways that we can implement these bills with some concerns we have." But at least say you support the bill. That's number one. Good question. Number two, how impacting is the mayor's cuts? You did get cuts to your agency, I think, 3% across the board, correct?
I would have to defer to our OMB colleagues on that one.
You don't know whether your agency's budget was cut?
This panel doesn't have the budget information.
Excuse me?
This panel here doesn't have the budget information. I know we were here last week at our budget hearing.
You're assistant commissioners, right? So, you don't know what your agency budget is and whether it was cut by the mayor or Come on now. Stop it. You were. And my concern is that we have the rhetoric in place, but the reality is that the dollars are not committed there. Even when you say, "We have a center in Brownsville to deal with the racism," and "one in the Bronx," and, you know, woefully inadequate what's happening in our communities. That's lip service and pittance, you know, in terms of what you're putting in our communities. Most of our primary care doctors is the emergency room for our communities. That's the primary care, the emergency room. These are deeply, deeply rooted racist problems that we have in our districts. And I just think that there has to be more meat, there have to be more in-depth commitment to resources. We do have urgent care, you know, Brookdale Hospital is in my area, and I know that's not under you, but Brookdale, that's a voluntary hospital. It has urgent care. We have a family care and all of that. And we have a Betty Shabazz Medical Center that my wife and I, Inez Barron, when she was a councilmember, we had come in. But it still does not come near meeting the needs. So I would like to see, in my beloved East New York, a greater commitment to primary care, a greater commitment to the resources that are needed to deal with the deeply rooted racism in the healthcare delivery system in New York and all throughout Black communities in America. Now's the time to say something. Now, you can say, "I really like that."
Well, thank you for that. And I think, you know, we certainly agree with much of your assessment, and I think it resonates with our, the Board of Health's resolution relating to structural racism as a public health crisis. I think one of the challenges we have is really the, much of the regulatory authority with respect to healthcare delivery lies at the New York State. And so, really continue, eager to continue this conversation about what we together can do.
You know, I just mean things that you can do within the confines of your authority, not reaching out to New York State, but there are some things that you can do in the confines into your authority, because I don't want you to throw us to the state, and the state throws us back to you, and then we don't go anywhere. So just in the context of your resources, your authority, your ideas, you know, we are woefully inadequately addressing the needs of particularly Black and around low-income communities, and it needs to change radically.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm now going to turn it over to Councilmember Narcisse for her questions.
Good morning, and thank you again, Chair. I believe in preventive care, because preventive care can help us, right? Hypertension affects an estimate of 1.8 million adults in New York City, and is a leading risk factor for heart disease and stroke. We must provide New Yorkers, wouldn't you say that we must provide New Yorkers with every available resources that we can give them to keep folks alive and maintaining their lives? Yes. For the blood pressure, being a home care using them, we call them sphygmometers, right? Based on your knowledge and expertise, what can you tell us about the use of blood pressure monitors in our homes or in public places? Are they useful and/or sufficiently accurate? Are you, I mean, familiar with the different type of personal blood pressure machine or sphygmometre?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Narcisse. And again, it's wonderful to have a councilmember who is a nurse and healthcare provider and advocate. So, first on the use and utility of self-monitored blood pressure or home blood pressure monitors, certainly, as you mentioned, so evidence shows that measuring out-of-office blood pressure outside of a primary care clinic is a very useful way, an important way, to identify certain important types of hypertension, including white coat hypertension and masked hypertension. And we believe that using, expanding home self-monitored blood pressure is certainly a public health priority. We continue to work to address gaps and identify barriers to accessing blood pressure monitors in areas with the highest prevalence of hypertension, such as your own constituents. Limited funds do constrain our ability to expand access to home blood pressure monitors. And then your final question about the types of blood pressure monitors...
Are they useful? That I want to hear.
Yeah. They are, we agree that they're useful, and they're definitely, an evidence-based component of comprehensive management of blood pressure by people who are living with high blood pressure.
But, as a nurse, what we do, the doctors, usually send a note for us to document the blood pressure throughout. Or sometimes, like, if you're not seeing the client on a regular basis, they will have a home blood pressure kit. So when you're not there for them to take their own blood pressure, because if the doctor have to make a decision in changing medication, they need to know what is the blood pressure the average per each day. But since the nurse is not there every day, so they will have a monitor. So I find that they were useful. You find them useful?
I agree.
So, which type of blood pressure machine that you recommend for them to use at home?
I, you know, I, we would defer that, the question about which specific type of blood pressure monitor, we would defer that to discussions between, you know, individual care seekers and their care providers, their nurses, clinicians, doctors.
So you're not familiar with them? With the blood pressure machine? The sphygmometre?
Well, as a clinician, certainly I am familiar with them. I'm just saying that I don't, I don't think that we, we as a health department are not recommending any particular brand or make of a home blood pressure machine.
Okay. What is the average cost of a blood pressure monitor? Would you know?
I mean, they're highly variable in terms of the end cost to user, because it depends upon the, again, the brand and type, and then various electronic sort of bells and whistles, but anywhere between $10 and $500. I mean, in terms of the cost to the user.
It's not that, $10 to $500. But anyway, we can do more research on that one to see the average, because lately I have not been in the market buying them, but I know they're pretty decent, reasonable price that you can get a blood pressure machine. How often must blood pressure monitors be replaced?
That depends, that depends on their use and the type of blood pressure monitor.
Averagely, can you take a shot at it? No? No. Okay. Can you elaborate on the tools available through DOHMH hypertensive action kit?
So, thank you for that, for that question. The, our Health Department's hypertension action kit provides resources for providers, including guides on hypertension management coaching, self-measured blood pressure monitoring, as we were talking about, and other references to support person-centered hypertension care. The kit also includes clinical tools for providers to educate and empower their patients, such as a plate planner, medication adherence assessment, blood pressure tracking card, and educational information regarding sodium intake. Finally, the kit includes patient education materials, including educational palm cards on salt, blood pressure, and posters on how to take one's blood pressure. All these resources are intended to support providers and help educate on blood pressure management, and they're available online.
You see, the tracking you mentioned, the cards, those are all the things that the people can use too, as well? That people at home?
That's correct.
Folks at home. Is there any information in the kit that relate to self-measured blood pressure monitoring?
That's correct.
If so, what information is specifically provided to the public?
Specifically, how one can take the blood pressure at home using a blood pressure monitor and safely and accurately interpret that.
Is there guidance on how to take your blood pressure?
Yes.
According to the DOHMH website, local data suggests that the rate of controlling blood pressure among patients diagnosed with hypertension is lowest among Black adults, 59%, compared to white, 73%, Asian, 73%, and Latino adults, 69%. How is DOHMH working to address the rate of controlled blood pressure among patients, particularly Black New Yorkers diagnosed with hypertension?
Thank you again for elevating this vital public health and racial justice issue. So, two areas that we are in particular working on, one is, as I mentioned, through Take the Pressure Off New York, which is a multi-stakeholder coalition to address comprehensively hypertension prevention, screening prevention and treatment. And the second is that we work with our network of small primary care and primary care clinic and federally qualified health center partners in supporting their use of tools such as the hypertension action kit and other tools to improve the quality of hypertension management that they provide.
Thank you. Does DOHMH have access to the locations of all public Does DOHMH have access to the locations of all public blood pressure monitors in New York City right now?
We do not.
Hmm?
We do not.
Many patients suffering from hypertension have a difficult time fighting a blood pressure machine monitor with a cuff that fits their arms. I always had that problem as a home care nurse. I always have to have a different one, right? Do you know what cuff sizes are available to the public and how they can access them?
Well, I can definitely, I can, I definitely share the challenge there, both when I care for kids and for adults on this issue. There's sort of four main categories, one, the pediatric cuff, the adult cuff, the large adult cuff, and the thigh cuff, and then a number of specialized ones that are used in different circumstances, particularly in the hospital setting. And again, the proper sizing of those cuffs, we recommend to be in consultation with nurses and clinicians.
Consultation with the nurses. We're the ones that actually take the blood pressure all the time, right? The doctors rarely do that. They only do it when the nurse is not around. Studies have shown that older adults are more likely to get inaccurate measurements from their at-home blood pressure monitors. Is DOHMH working with the New York City aging population to ensure that they are properly educated on how to use the BPMs and how to read the measurement?
At this time, we don't have specific programming around that.
So, so now I hope that you can join me in what I'm asking for. Because when you don't know, you don't, I mean, individually, it's so hard, because people have different size of arms, but if you know that person, you give them that cuff, that measurement for themselves, you can automatically knows how to measure. One of the thing, from my experience, one of the experience that I have, when you go to take the blood pressure and they're borrowing from somebody else, it cannot fit, you cannot get a proper reading. You know that, right? If the cuff is not fitting right, you get, the reading is going to be inaccurate. So I'm hoping that you can join me, whatever that we can have the discussion, to make sure that we address it properly, but it will save lives, that's what, at the end of the day, all right? In helping keeping those folks that are at risk, because we know predisposition for all the diseases, especially during COVID. When COVID hit, most of the folks that end up dying are the one that suffer either heart problem, hypertension, diabetes, so therefore hypertension, if we can address hypertension, you have more people right now walking around with hypertension that have no knowledge, no clue, every day, because it's a silent killer, that's why we call it. So I'm hoping that you can join me in addressing that, and that would be a start for us to keep New Yorkers healthy, healthy as well. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. I'm going to ask, first, I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Gail Brewer, and she has some questions to ask.
Thank you. I'm sorry I was late. The issue that I'm concerned about with Councilmember Brandon is the pediatrics emergency room. And the reason this came up was, I have two friends, colleague and a friend, they have three-year-olds, five-year-olds. In one case, EMS came very quickly, the child passed out with many, many ailments, panicked parents, ambulance comes, and where do you want to go? Which hospital? Which is, I know I've been in ambulance, they ask that question sometimes, and parents didn't know, so they picked the hospital where the child had been born. They get to the hospital, and it's not a pediatric emergency. I know they're supposed to take care of everyone, but the mother felt, in two cases, that it wasn't the appropriate place for a child, even in the ER. What the mothers would have liked would be a list of the pediatric emergencies where they could have gone, where they felt they would have gotten better support. Sometimes the hospitals are right near each other. This particular ER told them to go to the pediatric elsewhere. So we need that list. It doesn't exist. So my interns are fabulous, and they made a list of what they think the pediatric emergency rooms are, but there's no such list. So I'm just wondering, is that something that, with this kind of information, sharing it with 311, whether you think that would be a good idea? Like I said, and then it would be circulated to the schools, and mom emails, and so on and so forth. And I didn't know if you think it's a good idea. And then I think we do need to understand the difference between a pediatric ER and emergency rooms. I must admit, my kids are older, I didn't know that there was a difference. I thought it would all be the same. That is not how parents feel. And actually, that's not how doctors feel, interestingly enough. So I'd like to get your input.
Thank you, thank you again for your passion for this issue. I'll share it just as a, you know, fairly recently, as a pediatrician at Elmhurst, again, I had a situation that also highlights the need for, the importance of pediatric emergency rooms and what their role is. You know, for many years prior to coming to New York City, I was a complex care pediatrician, which cares for kids with various developmental and other complex medical needs. And those kids, as we were talking about regarding primary care, really need a very comprehensive medical team, clinical team, that interdisciplinary team that cares for all of their needs. And so, you know, we admitted a child who had this sorts of complex care needs. And we're talking with a father, who happened to be Spanish-speaking, and he said, you know, you know, I have this issue with my G-tube, the gastropasymy tube, because my child doesn't eat, so we have, he has a G-tube. And I have this issue, and whenever, I can't bring him to the hospital, so I have to call EMS. And so then I call EMS, and they say, you know, because you live in the catchment area of Elmhurst Hospital, you have to go to Elmhurst Hospital, which we do have a pediatric emergency room, we do have a pediatric outpatient room, but his care providers are actually at Cohen's, you know, out towards outer Queens, towards Long Island, which has, they have all of his primary care providers. And so, you know, I actually, I said, look, you know, his dad was just like, I want to talk with my GI doc, I want you guys to be able to coordinate care, so can you transfer me to Cohen's? I said, absolutely, and we arranged for that. And I wrote him a letter that said, doctor's orders, when EMS comes, hand this to EMS and say, take me to Cohen's. So, you know, I think that this issue is, has many different layers to it, and again, I applaud you for elevating it. I think, and you know, there really is a vital role of pediatric emergency rooms. And I'm not just saying that as a pediatrician, I really do, as a parent as well, I do think it's vital. In terms of, you know, how do we get the word out about these, you know, one is that, you know, really what we recommend to parents is that you call 911 and EMS direct as appropriate, because in an emergency, they have to take you to really the nearest emergency room, and they can transfer you, as in the case I talked, you know. And I think the other piece is, you know, that there are, you know, New York State, which regulates clinical care, they do maintain a website of pediatric facilities. And so, you know, I think what we want to just ensure is that whatever, you know, that this is timely, up-to-date, accurate information, that's not conflicting with other sources.
Well, I mean, these are very sophisticated parents, they know nothing about the state list. So, I mean, I think the city should have the same list, and then you should, there should be a law that says you publicize it, because one thing to have a list on the website, but if nobody knows about it. This ambulance driver, and they're all great, said, where do you want to go? I've had that too with my kids, where do you want to go? So, I mean, I don't know, I think people should know that there are choices when you have a, you know, a baby, basically. And it's, you know, to transfer is heart-wrenching also, because time is of the essence. These parents, these parents were totally panicked. So, I mean, I just think you should, we should have a much more robust information than what we have now, because nobody has told me, this is my negligence, but certainly these parents are, you know, type As, as we call them, and they didn't know a thing about the state list, if there is such a thing. I have a list from the interns, Elmhurst is on it, obviously, but, you know, no addresses, nobody knows what you know. And so the question is, what can Department of Health, is that something that you think you would do in terms of publicizing, working with DOE, et cetera, and keeping it up to date on both state and city? Is that something that you would consider? That's my question.
Yes, thank you for that, and certainly happy to discuss further, sort of the intent and how we get there.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very concerned about this issue, so thank you.
No, absolutely. I'm going to turn, I have some more questions, but I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Krishnan to ask his questions.
Thank you so much, Chair. Just a few questions on Intro 814 on AED access. So as we know, the bill would require DOHMH to issue a report on the number and location of AEDs in public places. Does DOHMH currently have a framework or list of the location of all AEDs in New York City?
We do not.
Do not, right?
Not, correct.
Does DOHMH distribute free or low-cost AEDs to public institutions and spaces like schools, houses of worship, nursing homes, non-for-profit organizations, or parks?
We do not.
Is there an existing system that keeps track of the number of AEDs that have been issued, and to whom?
There is not.
Is there an exact number or estimate on how many AEDs are currently available in public places in New York City?
There is not.
Is there a maintenance system in place to regularly check on the condition of AEDs?
There is not.
Do we, so I would assume that we don't know then how many AEDs are in good working condition and ready for use in the event of an emergency?
We do not.
What maintenance is typically required for AEDs to make sure they're kept up to code and ready for use?
That's a, that's a great question. We don't, you know, we don't have our, we don't have guidance on that, and we don't, you know, because we don't monitor or collect information on AEDs, and certainly happy to discuss more with you and with Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services on that topic.
Sure, thank you, Assistant Commissioner. Those are my questions, but I just want to end by saying, given all of that, I think the urgency and the need for this legislation to be implemented is very high. I do agree with Councilmember Baron that these bills are all bills that we should be moving forward expeditiously. We don't want, God forbid, another emergency crisis in the city where resources could have been available, lifesaving devices, but we as a city don't have any clue as to whether, how many are maintained, whether they're in good working order, where they're maintained. So I do appreciate your testimony, but it's my priority to make sure that this legislation both moves quickly and is implemented quickly. So I know there are things that we want to talk about and discuss as well, but I don't want it to slow down the process, because as we know, this is, these are lifesaving devices, and we as a city have got to do a much, much better job of tracking them, making sure they're in good working order, and finding out places where we actually do need them or they don't currently exist. And so, given that we don't have any of those systems right now, it's clear that this legislation fills a glaring void in our healthcare access for such a crucial lifesaving instrument. But I know that you all, under Commissioner Vasan and Assistant Commissioner Maru, I know you all are very committed to this, and that healthcare access is a top priority for you all, and finding any way to, the data is especially important to you all too. So I look forward to us working together to make sure that we can implement this as quickly as possible. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I want to echo what Councilmember Krishnan said about the AEDs. I used to work in a past life at the emergency, with the emergency medical service, so they do, they do look at them, now it's part of FIDNE, they look at the AEDs. One is that, I will tell you that I know from experience that a lot of them are not checked regularly, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to deal with that. And we also, it is important to have a list of where they are, and so that people can help to maybe save a life here and there. So I think that that's very important. I will also say that having, I worked at Woodhull Hospital, so at H&amp;H, and to Councilmember Brewer's point about pediatric EDs, we had a pediatric ED there, and it does make a difference. The instruments are different, the care is different, not that it's, that you get better care one way or the other, but it's, and it's a specialty area, so that if you have a child with some acute issue, it's not always picked up in the regular ED. So to that point, I want to echo what the councilmember said. And then going lastly to the blood pressure, blood pressure issue, I'm technically an older adult, and when I, I will tell you that when my blood pressure is checked by a machine, it's 20 points higher always than when it's done manually. And so I think that people really need to be educated, and I'm pretty educated and have been working in healthcare for a very long time, about how that works, whether we should be alarmed or not alarmed, because I could take it one place and it's perfectly normal, and in another place it's high. So I don't know how that's calibrated on the machines, I don't know how that's, how we get word out to folks, especially older adults, so I'm asking the question.
Yeah, thank you for that. Can you just, so you're, just, can you clarify your specific question?
My question is, how do we educate people on, when they get their blood pressure taken or they get a screening, whether that's an accurate reading or not? And how can they determine if it is? Like I said, the machines sometimes are not calibrated right, depending what you get, what you don't get. If you buy one, it, some of them are better than others, some of them have a very vast error rate. So that's the issue. And then, why is, I'm just curious as to why there's a difference between taking the blood pressure manually and doing it with a machine, because the tendency is, and I'm told, the machines are calibrated higher.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I think this, I very much acknowledge and appreciate your experience here with respect to the discrepancies between different forms of manually and also different forms of automatic blood pressure cuff measurements. And I think it really does, again, highlight the importance of education, as you mentioned, and work with improving primary care access, because really, having consistency, blood pressure monitoring and management is really, for many of us, is a lifelong endeavor, whether we have diagnosed hypertension or not. And so, having consistency and regularity within the primary care system is vital, and certainly happy to discuss more how we can work on some of this, the specific issue of the accuracy and reliability of these different machines with both TPO, the Take the Pressure Off program and the NYC Reach program.
No, and I also think it's important for doctors and everybody that takes blood pressure to sort of be educated about how to do it, because if you, when I'm reading stuff, I read that you're supposed to be quiet and sit still, and your arm's supposed to be elevated, and all this other stuff, and that never happens in a doctor's office, never, ever, ever. So I think there needs to be an education. I know that the state does that with, you know, has responsibility for that with physicians, but I'd like for DOHMH to work with the state on really clarifying and educating the public, and that, my colleague is smiling, about what is involved here, and so that we can really have people be healthy and be confident in that when they're getting a reading, that it's a certain way, that, you know, because I will tell you that a lot of the medications there are for blood pressure are not the greatest either, and there are side effects to it. So it's a question of, what is it that we have to do, and are we getting, are we getting good readings from just in general, like what the practice is, what the standard should be, and everything else? There's a lot of confusion out there.
Absolutely, thank you.
I need to spend time with my colleagues on that one. We're going to do that. Okay. Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Is anybody else? Thank you very much for coming to testify today, we really appreciate it, and we'll follow up.
Okay, that concludes testimony from the administration. We are now going to move to public testimony. So what we will do is we will start with public testimony from folks who are in the room, and then we will move to virtual testimony. Just a reminder that if you are submitting written testimony, you have up to 72 hours after this hearing to do that. You can do that at testimony@council.nyc.gov is the email address. And also just, yeah, so why don't we get started? Then we will start with the first panel. We're going to be hearing from John Flanagan and Dr. Neil Shipley. And then just a reminder to And then just a reminder to speak clearly into the microphone, and you'll press the red, to press the button, wait for the red light before you begin your testimony.
All set?
You may begin.
All right, good morning. Thank you very much. Very nice to be here, quite educational to be able to listen to the preceding testimony. And drew my attention to a lot of issues, but my name's John Flanagan. I'm a, I serve as Senior Vice President for Government Affairs at Northwell Health, and I'm joined today by Dr. Neil Shipley. Dr. Shipley oversees our Go Health urgent care facilities. And Dr. Shipley is our Medical Director and our Radiation Safety Officer for all of our Go Health urgent care facilities. And I just want to give a shout out to Councilmember Krishnan in particular on AEDs. In a former iteration of my life, I got a chance to work on a very extensive legislation that came out of constituent work. A family, the Akampuras, lost their son many years ago to a tragic lacrosse accident. And they were the genesis for changing the state law. And a lot has happened since then, so that's one thing I very keenly understand. That said, we're delighted to be here. I want to thank all the members, the Chair in particular, but all the members of the committee for affording us the opportunity to speak on the issues that are before the committee today for their consideration. And I'm wholly mindful that you're in the middle of the budget process. The fact that we would be able to be here is equally helpful. I'm going to speak very briefly and then hand it over to Dr. Shipley, just in terms of community care and urgent care in particular, and how we run our operations and the, the things that we focus on. Our CEO, Michael Dowling, is heralded as a national healthcare leader, was voted as the number one healthcare leader in the country. And having worked very closely with him, it's about mission, it's about access, about equity, and about excellence. And I know that factually, because I talk to him all the time, work on issues with him, in our hospital-based settings in particular, of course. But outside of that, if you were to ask about Northwell's system, there's a lot more that happens outside the hospitals than happens inside the hospitals. And about 55% of our, okay, our revenue comes from outside the hospital. The point we want to talk about today relates to urgent care. For efficient operation, flexibility, how we serve people in their time of need, how we try and avoid acts, people coming to the emergency department unnecessarily. And with, it's all with an eye towards getting out into communities and providing the best care possible. Very confident that Dr. Shipley can articulate it extremely well. He's got decades of experience and is our frontline person on issues involving urgent care. Dr. Shipley, and thank you again.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Neil Shipley. I've been a New York City resident for about 35 years. I'm board certified in emergency medicine, have been practicing in emergency medicine and urgent care since 1993. In 19, in 2021, I had the honor and privilege of being sworn in as a New York City honorary police surgeon for our work with the Police Department in support of the COVID pandemic. For the past seven years, I've been the Medical Director for a large health system, Northwell Health System affiliated urgent care network. We have 20 sites located in New York City. As we know, urgent care centers play a very important role in the New York City healthcare system by improving access and equity of care for thousands of New Yorkers. EDs in New York City are generally overcrowded, long wait times, access to PCPs can be challenging, and the cost of an urgent care visit is something like four or five times less than the cost of a visit in the emergency department for a same, for the same condition. Prior to the urgent care model, really the only place New Yorkers could access immediate unscheduled care was, was the ED. Another example of the role that urgent cares can and hope, we hope to play in avoiding unnecessary ED visits is the upcoming launch of our partnership with CMS and FDNY on a program called ET3. ET3 stands for Emergency Triage Treat and Transport. It is a federally sponsored demonstration project that will go live in 2023, and it will allow FDNY EMS crews to bring patients to alternative destinations. Lower acuity patients can be brought directly to the emergency department, sorry, to the urgent care center instead of the emergency department for diagnosis, evaluation, and treatment. We are very closely aligned with CMS and FDNY on the importance and impact of this demonstration project for New Yorkers. The specific regulation we're discussing today regarding the use of mobile x-rays in the urgent care center is very problematic for us as a business. Is it okay to continue? Thank you. And for our ability to serve this purpose for the New York City community. Our centers were designed to be small, to penetrate retail spaces and be close to public transportation hubs, to give patients best access. The cost of the facility modifications alone to convert our sites to fixed x-ray rooms would be a big economic hardship for the business. But more importantly, in having to do so, we would have to eliminate at least one, probably two of the existing exam rooms in all of our centers. That would dramatically reduce our capacity and throughput and the ability to see patients and provide them with alternative destinations to the emergency department. I'd like to spend the rest of the time here talking about our quality and safety program for the mobile x-rays. We have been performing them in our centers since we first opened in 2014. Our priority has and always will be patient and staff safety. In our, since 2014, in our New York City-based locations, we have performed over 72,000 mobile x-rays. We have a rigorous quality control program that is comparable to the ones in place in hospital EDs and inpatient units that also use mobile x-ray. And I'm going to just highlight two of those programs. Since 2014, no staff member radiology technician has ever received a radiation exposure that reaches or exceeds the maximum occupational dose for either quarterly or annual exposure limits. The folks before us from the Department of Health talked about the Alara principle, as low as reasonably acceptable. We have never exceeded that once since 2014, zero. The other thing that was spoken about is the, what's called the RR analysis, or repeat reject analysis. Repeat imaging due to improper technique is a leading contributor to unnecessary radiation exposure. The standard for this is less than 5%. We do RR analysis and all, quarterly on all of our units and all of our sites. Our performance is well below that. We are consistently at or below 2.0% of images that have to be repeated or rejected due to quality. That is comparable to the RR rate that is observed in Northwell inpatient and hospital-based units. So let me, let me sum up here. We do appreciate the regulatory intent behind this article. Patient and staff safety is our highest priority. But we believe there's a way to preserve that intent by granting waivers to urgent care centers to continue to perform mobile x-rays if they adhere to the similar quality and safety standards that you can find in the hospital setting. We have a very long track record of excellent patient and staff safety. We have a robust quality control program that meets or exceeds all recognized standards. And without our ability to do mobile x-ray, a significant portion of those 72,000 patients would have ended up in an overburdened emergency department or potentially deferred care, leading potentially to worse outcomes or higher costs of care. So giving this ability will help us support this mission of increased access and equity to care for all New Yorkers. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you on this important issue today, and we are obviously open to answer any questions.
Before, I have a couple of questions, but before I do that, I want to recognize my colleague, Councilmember Ariola, who wants to ask some questions.
Hi, thanks so much for coming to testify today. So just, I have one question. Do you have any recommendations for the best way to expand care in communities outside of the hospital setting?
The best way to expand care in any communities? I, look, we are not in competition with primary care offices. We complement them, you know, we're open when they're not, on the weekends and evening hours. I think a comprehensive focus on, you know, access to primary care is, is critical for, for communities. I think access to urgent care, to unscheduled walk-in care should be part of that sort of overall picture. So I think it's a kind of a triad. You need to have a great public health system, public health departments. You need to have a robust emergency department, and you need something, and you need primary care. Urgent care fits into that space between primary care and the emergency department. Lower cost, easy to access, you don't need to make an appointment. Most of our patients walk in on the same day, the visits last 45 minutes to an hour. They cost a fourth or a fifth of the emergency department. So I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all solution. I think it's a combination, it has to be multifactorial.
Thank you very much.
I just add to what the doctor said. You know, we're asking for specific relief in the overall view of healthcare. And I think what we're looking for, if you, you can perform these services in somebody's home or in a long-term healthcare facility. You can perform these services in urgent care facilities outside of the city of New York. You can perform them in hospitals all throughout our region. We have zero issue with the notion of standards, strong oversight, regulatory review, and we adhere to that. And as Dr. Shipley said, we have 100% compliance. We've never had an incident. Our specific ask in terms of the global stuff as well is to say, relief here would be very important to our patients. And I would reiterate, we, we hold our employees to the same standards that we do our patients, meaning that we want to do every single thing possible to protect them. This relief delivers better patient care. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you, and, you know, we'll, we'll take this in, and we have, if you, doctor, I don't know if you summarized your testimony, but you can submit the whole thing, because it does get looked at by the committee and everybody else and the central staff. I do want to say that I have, in my district, I have Northwell Forest Hills, and I work closely with them, and the CEO there is great. And so we're trying to do what we can, and I've, I've used the urgent care as well. I just want to be on the record, Northwell urgent care. And so, and gotten, and received good treatment there. But I do want to say, one of the things I would, do want to suggest is to talk to the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. I'm sure that you've gone to them already. But I think that they would be willing to work with you and try to come to some kind of compromise. But, you know, so that's, that's, that's just a suggestion I want to make. But I do want to thank you for coming here and giving the testimony. You do? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Nocese, so she, she has a question.
I'm trying to understand, do you have urgent, how many you have? Do you have urgent healthcare right now that you work in?
There are 20 in the New York City boroughs. If you expand the entire size of the footprint, includes Westchester, Nassau, and Suffolk, we have 57 urgent care centers, but 20 are located in the, in the New York City boroughs.
Okay. How many clients do you see per year, last year?
In New York City boroughs, about 320,000, across the entire network, about 950,000. Again, in 2021, slightly over 1 million patients. During the pandemic, we did about 500,000 COVID tests in the New York City boroughs. We diagnosed about 70,000 patients with COVID, treating them and keeping them out of the hospital emergency department, flattening the curve. So I don't know if that is answering the question?
No, it's answering the question. Where are you most, I mean, what I, my question is just, I want to see how you strategically place them? Were they throughout Brooklyn, different zip codes, different place in, in Queens? How you plan to put them?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have a list which we can submit.
How you decide, my question should be, how you decided where to place urgent care?
Yeah, so I'm the Medical Director, I'm responsible for clinical quality and safety. I don't make the real estate decisions. I know that we are in, you know, in the New York City boroughs and Westchester and Staten Island and, and Manhattan and Queens and Brooklyn. But again, I don't play a role in deciding the locations of the centers. My job is to stay focused on clinical quality and patient safety.
Because I, I know a lot of people use urgent care, so thank you for your time.
Councilmember, I, I'll take a stab at that if it helps. We are Go Health operations, the urgent care centers are a joint venture with Northwell. And I think it's viewed in the context of a couple of different things. Where's our footprint, where are we growing? And unlike a lot of other healthcare systems, we are continuing to expand. So we have close to 900 facilities outside of the traditional hospital setting. And that's ever-evolving, because of the evolution in healthcare generally, insurance reimbursement issues like that. And some of it is health, healthcare component in terms of where we're providing services, where do we see healthcare desert, so to speak, and what are we trying to do about that? So it's a healthcare perspective combined with a business review. And we can absolutely send you a list of the facilities that we have. And you can let us know what you think.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
May I say one other thing? The, the previous folks who are sitting at this table had some comments about insurance. And I just want to be clear, we accept every insurance that the health system does, including, you know, Medicaid, Medicare. So again, we believe our centers do improve access and equity to care. And again, reflecting on our strong track record of patient safety and quality, we think that this relief would help us continue to preserve that mission for New Yorkers. Thank you.
And thank you. I have no other questions unless, what, Gail, do you?
Dr. Shipley is my neighbor. I have no questions. Thank you.
That's a good thing, doctor.
What happens in the Upper West Side stays in the Upper West Side, yes, Gail.
All right, thank you very much for, for your testimony. We appreciate it, and, you know, we can, we'll certainly work with you to see what we can do to make sure that everybody has access to healthcare, the healthcare they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much to this panel. Next, we'll be hearing from Greg Mohalovich, please.
Just whenever, are we ready? Okay, hi, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Greg Mohalovich. I'm the Community Assembly Director for the American Heart Association here in New York City. I'm very excited for the topics of today's hearing. AHA is the nation's oldest and largest voluntary organization dedicated to fighting cardiovascular disease and stroke. And we talked a lot about CPR and AEDs. We're very excited for the topic because CPR saves lives, AED saves lives. And I just wanted to comment a couple of things. I won't go into the stats, because everyone covered it, and I'm going to use my two minutes, you know, efficiently. With Intro 975 with CPR classes, yay, we love it. Just a little clarity about training versus certification, because we get that kind of question where training is practicing compressions and situational awareness, where certification is actually like rescue breaths. And also specifying where child and infant CPR classes are, because those, those are different. And a lot of times they're included in parenting classes, but not always. Intro 814 with the AED reporting, again, there's some clarity, clarity there. Happy to see that Councilmember Krishnan was talking about like upkeep and how often they're doing. But to your point, Chair Schulman, for children, you know, over the age of eight, you can use a standard AED, but one to eight, you have to use pediatric pads or AEDs that might have a kid switch that reduce the, the voltage. And children, you know, under one have to use, you know, manual defibrillator. So clarity on, on what's available there. And then for the BP, the BP kiosks, we're a big fan of Take the Pressure Off NYC. We're on the Steering Committee, so we're very excited to see this kind of renewed focus. But the kiosks, I think, are kind of a old-school way of doing things. I mean, we talked about how self-monitoring blood pressure at home is a validated approach to managing your blood pressure, and the kiosks that were, were placed, it's funny, you asked where they were. I actually printed the, the city's maps where they were placed, and I'm happy to share it with the council. I just didn't want to share it before there. The placement was a little uneven. So there were four on Staten Island, none on the North Shore, which is, you know, lower-income black and brown communities. I think there was only one in your district, Councilmember Ariel. I think there was only one, there was only one north of 181st Street. So kiosk may not be the best way. So we would definitely support ways that we can get BP cuffs into the communities with community partners, local health clinics for distribution, so people can monitor their blood pressure safely at, at home. And I can leave this if people actually want to see the maps. It's a, just city, they put it directly, oh, and most of these places have closed, by the way. The Rite-Aids and everything was closed.
We'll take it, and we'll make sure that we document it.
Yeah, so, so thank you for your attention on all this. Any way we can be a useful partner, we're, we're happy to assist in any way we can. And thank you for the time here today.
So you encourage the blood pressure to have the machine at home?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the key, we, we.
The kiosks are the one that went.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we think, I mean, and the DOH, the doctor from DOH has talked about like the white coat syndrome where people are tense, and the idea that they, I mean, you know, you're a nurse. I feel like I shouldn't be saying this to you, the idea that in more relaxed, they can do this. And I mean, for, for personally, we're also seeing this like greater reliance on remote care because of the pandemic. People are having their Zoom meetings with the doctor, just like we always said that people should have thermometers at home, or the, the O2 monitor. people should have thermometers at home, or the O2 monitors, the idea that having your blood pressure cuff at home really helps you manage your numbers a little better. So they, you know, they talk about like it's covered by insurance, not everyone has insurance, not everyone's insurance covers it. So the idea of figuring out a way that we can get the cuffs into the hands of people who need it, who maybe aren't going to take a bus and travel for an hour to the nearest pharmacy that has a kiosk, we think is meeting people where they are, and it really helps people have that kind of health equity issue, and we're happy to talk with you more about this.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ariola, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much to this panel. We're now going to call up Richard Flores, please.
You ready? Yeah. I read on the website that they were covering providing vision testing and eyeglasses to low-income individuals for residents whose annual gross income is within 250% of the federal poverty level. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I wanted to testify simply on behalf of a personal reason that I think that the healthcare system is failing. Regarding the urgent care centers, I have to be honest with you, I've never, ever gone to the urgent care centers. I've always thought that the better route, despite the budget reasons that you discussed, was simply to go to the hospital to get care and not have a nurse or someone else see me and then refer me to a hospital. I currently have Empire Blue Cross Blue Shield as my insurance, and I have Medicare and Medicaid. So I have Part A, Part B, Part C, and Part D. I went to the Eye and Ear Infirmary last Monday simply to get a test for my vision. I'd like to be really blunt here, and hopefully you can use this data for what it'll be used for later. Councilmember Barron made a few remarks about discrimination and racism in the system and how that's impacting upon the system. The ophthalmologist I saw was this gentleman, Dr. Aaron C. Brown, at the Eye and Ear Infirmary, and he conducted the examination. What I'd like to say for the record here was that he did a very, very poor job of examining my eyes in the room. He didn't tell the truth about any pre-existing conditions that I have.
If you want to make a statement just about in general about the healthcare, but if you're talking about a specific doctor, individual, we can't entertain that here.
Right. Well, I thought it would work in conjunction with making the testimony. What I've seen, what my personal experience has been, is that there seems to be endemic corruption in the healthcare system, and I'm sure I'm not the only person that's experiencing it, that's even with the COVID-19 health crisis and other pre-existing conditions that people have. And I think that what that's doing is that's making the system work harder and spend more money, and more individuals are sick and more people are ill, as everyone knows, as a result of the fact that the system seems to be not working correctly. The budget proposals that you people make and the policy decisions that you make, understandably, I don't know its full complexity, you know a lot more than I do, but I thought simply using my experience, you could use that for your data and all the other individuals that are impacted. And I just wanted to use that example of that. I find it just really kind of strange, to be honest with you, as a civilian, as a citizen of the city, that the committee understands and has knowledge that this kind of thing is occurring. And my question to you, I'll stop here, is what are you prepared to do about it? If you can do something about it?
This is a hearing for you to just give your thoughts on, not to, we have a process here in the city council. You should contact your local council member, whoever that is, to talk to them specifically about going through that with them, and we appreciate you bringing us the testimony just about the particular place that you were at, and so we'll take that in. We just can't, talking about individual doctors or individuals in general is not appropriate for this forum, but we'll take in what you said, and we encourage you, I encourage you to talk to your local council member who can go through the process with you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to this panel. At this time, if there is anyone left in the room who would like to testify but has not done so yet, please fill out an appearance card and give it to the Sergeant-at-Arms. Seeing none. We are now going to move to virtual testimony. We have, I believe, one registered panelist, so we're going to hear from Dr. Joseph Tolano, please.
You may begin.
Can you hear me? Yes. Great, thank you. And also, I want to thank you for promoting me to doctor. I am not a doctor, but I appreciate that. Not lofty goals for one day, maybe. But thank you to Chair Schulman and to the committee for the opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Joe Tolano. I'm a senior policy manager with Primary Care Development Corporation, or PCDC. We're a nonprofit organization, U.S. Treasury certified, CDF5, founded and located here in New York City. Our mission is to create healthier and more equitable communities by building, expanding, and strengthening access to quality primary care. Since our founding in 1993, PCDC has leveraged more than $1.4 billion to finance over 218 primary care projects, helping to provide 4.6 million medical visits annually and creating or preserving more than 19,000 jobs in low-income communities. Regular access to primary care is internationally recognized as a key social determinant of health and associated with positive health outcomes, especially when addressing common chronic conditions like heart disease, the leading cause of death in New York. Primary care reduces overall healthcare costs and is the only part of the healthcare system that has been proven to lengthen lives and reduce health disparities. PCDC urges the council to center primary care in its efforts to increase access to in-community healthcare. PCDC also encourages the council to ensure that each health proposal within the budget prioritizes and includes primary care providers, patients, and the workforce. More details included in my written testimony, but we also urge the council to increase investment overall in primary care and to advocate for related state policies, including restoring the city's Article 6 reimbursement rate to 36%. As we continue to navigate the COVID-19 pandemic, the city must think critically about the role of primary care in its resiliency efforts, planning for future public health crises, and accelerating efforts to address health disparities that have been exposed. Relating specifically to primary care access in the city, PCDC's own research has indicated the critical role of FQHCs in improving and protecting community health. In 2021, PCDC conducted research on the role of FQHCs on COVID outcomes.
Your time has expired.
Now, keep going, go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate that, Chair. In 2021, PCDC conducted research on the role of FQHCs on COVID outcomes and concluded that FQHCs helped reduce community-level COVID-19 mortality. We encourage the council to conduct a study of existing FQHC locations to identify whether some areas would benefit from additional facilities. Much is already known about primary care provider's role in the pandemic response. More than a decade ago, during the H1N1 crisis, PCDC worked with Jaccanese, DOHMH, and City Emergency Management to develop the Primary Care Emergency Preparedness Network in New York City, and various studies suggest that a similar network would have supported a better pandemic response this time around as well. Despite this, the primary care sector was largely left out of the early COVID-19 planning, service delivery, and mitigation efforts. Eventually, FQHCs were included in the federal vaccine distribution plan, and PCDC was grateful to play a role by providing pass-through federal funding to FQHC support vaccine outcome outreach and distribution. With much appreciated support from this council, PCDC also undertook research regarding access to primary care and the impact of COVID-19, and determined that communities with less access to primary care before the pandemic experienced more COVID-related illness and deaths than communities with better access. My written testimony includes more details and links to the city council's primary care access dashboard, and we'd be happy to provide additional information. We encourage the council to support a thorough review of primary care providers' experience throughout this pandemic. We also urge policymakers to ensure that spending on primary care and preventative services meets the demands of their communities, so people can lead healthier lives. We welcome the opportunity to work with Health Committee and the council to expand access to primary care for all New Yorkers, particularly those in disinvested, underserved communities. We thank you for your consideration of our recommendations and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but we appreciate the testimony.
Thank you, and I appreciate the extra time.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, if there is anyone else who would like to testify virtually but has not had their name called, please indicate that you would like to testify using the Zoom raise Seeing no hands, turning it back to the chair for closing remarks.
So I want to thank everyone today, you know, as I said earlier, healthcare is a human right, but we have to get some of the basics down, so we're going to be making sure that DOHMH and other agencies within the city come together so that we can have a cohesive health system that takes care of people regardless of their status, regardless of their finances, and regardless of their zip code. And with that, I am adjourning today's hearing of the Health Committee. Thank you.